Good evening. This is a meeting of the Township Committee. October 18th, 2021. The notice requirements provided for the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Star Ledger, the Independent, and the two overtimes. We're hosting at the Middletown Township Minnesota Building. We're filing with the Township Service on January 7th, 2021. Miniman Clark.
Here.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise from the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have certificates of appreciation proclamations. I'd like to invite Pat Snell up in front of the room. We recognize that Mayor Perry and for our presentation tonight.
So this is a bittersweet moment for me, but I'm so happy that it has come. You know, obviously, a few months back, after what I know was definitely one of the hardest decisions of our life, my friend here, Pat Snell, left her seat as member of the Middletown Township Committee for Georgia to obviously D. or Phil, as he's getting a work relocation. But the one thing I know is definitely true is that you can take Pat Snell out of Middletown, but Middletown is definitely Pat Snell. And I'm so happy to see you. When I saw your Facebook post this morning at the train station, I was happy. Because I knew that she was through to the back, she's a dominant. But Pat Snell has been not only a distinguished member of the governing body, but more importantly, a great friend to me, a great friend to my family, and a great friend to everybody up on this dais here, all the professionals sitting behind us, all the people that are here tonight, a true friend to her. And somebody that we miss, but we know that being with her is the most important thing. We're so happy for that. We wanted to do this a little while back. But I said to Pat, as any good mayor man would do, because you picked the date, Pat Snell. And she said, October 14th. Nineteen, nineteen. Tell me that's over. But, see, I can't even get the date. But I said, pick the date and we'll make this happen. So Pat, on behalf of the entire township committee, I call things over here for you. And I know that everybody up here is about to say a bunch of nice things about you. And as you would always tell me, don't let it get to your head. All right? You always can be corrected, so. But today, Pat, it's wonderful to have you back into this room on a Monday. I have this proclamation for you, and I think you're deserving that I reiterate this here, so. Patricia A. Snell, Middletown Township Committee. Whereas a resident of Middletown for over 40 years, Patricia A. Snell was first appointed to the Middletown Township Committee in July of 2018 and was elected by the public in both November of 2018 and November of 2020 to serve our community. And whereas part of her role as township committee woman, Pat is a member of the Middletown Township Planning Board, which served as the township committee's designated on the board of trustees for the Middletown Township Public Library and Arts Council, the Middletown Township, I'm sorry, Co-Board and Arts Council, Middletown Township Public Library and the Forest Department Conservancy's Board of Trustees. And whereas during her time on the committee, Pat connected with the community members across multiple generations, advocating for the elderly as well as the elderly. She sat on many board of education meetings that helped provide info when needed and always enjoyed attending events at our senior staff. Her dominant birth nature made it easy for people to share their thoughts and ideas about how to help make our town even better. And she always made people feel heard. And whereas Pat is extremely passionate about supporting our veterans as well as our first responders, and spoke often of their bravery and self-dedication. And whereas a central volunteer. Patricia A. Snell has supported a number of causes. One that was very close to her heart was September 11th. Shortly after the September 11th attacks, Pat organized fundraisers to help address the needs of Middletown's families. Twenty years later, she became the chairperson of the Middletown Township World Trade Center Memorial Gardens Committee and spearheaded a project that included adding two monuments to the gardens, a new walkway of personalized bricks, and worked tirelessly to sell lawn signs and sponsored banners to fundraise for the Rise of Hope Fountain that will one day embrace visitors at the end of the memorial's headway. Whereas Pat Snell or many Pat's, as a mother, grandmother, white coat, first responder, tennis coach, realtor, she always made informed decisions that were in the best interest of our community. An example of this being a leading voice for Middletown's open space and store preparation fund, Battle Refrain, which garnered more than 67% of voters' support. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Tony Perry, the Middletown Township Committee, do hereby honor and thank Patricia A. Snell for her invaluable contributions to the Middletown community, her positive impact, and her admirable public service. Her presence will be missed in Middletown, but Middletown will always be her home. Congratulations. Obviously, we have to, now, now, oh, false. That bill, that's removed down the story. And what Pat tells me, oh, my God, get me out of the senior and square foot apartment. And if you're doing it, I hope that's proven true. Well, I got some, I got some things that you can squeeze into that, I have a square foot apartment. The Middletown Township key is presented to every former member of the governing body. Honored and sometimes sadness, always sadness of that I'm dealing with. But our township key is proudly presented Patricia A. Snell, Taffy Committee, 2018, 2021. Great for appreciation of your dedicated service to Middletown. Thank you for your determination, your passion, and especially your donation towards improving our World Trade Center Memorial Gardens. You'll always be remembered for your commitment to our community and the residents of Middletown. Pat, congratulations. I've got a couple other things for including a beautiful cloth to look great or some type of mantelpiece. Really, the one thing that all the members of the Township Committee and I are so proud to present you with, Pat, is one very special thing. And that is, obviously, your lasting contribution to Middletown for generations of Americans, of people from all walks of life we'll see. It's the original rendering, the fountain of hope, frames for you. Because this was your project, this was your baby, and we wanted you to have this, Pat. So if you can't say anything, because I'm confused, you know, you always told me I could, you know, always do titles over here whispering here about. Go unconscious. But, but, Committeewoman Snell, floor is yours.
I've gone along with the Lord's product. I don't get it right now, so. They say home is where your heart is. Art here. In my home. It's lovely to speak here. I'm so proud to serve on this committee with Tony as mayor and with everyone up there. And Kelly, I am jealous, as all get out, because you're sitting in my seat, but I know you're going to do terrific. I guess change is hard, especially where you've been in the place for as long as I have. I am so, I tried to think on my drive here, we went out to dinner, my husband and I. And on my way here, I tried to think about how I truly felt about the town. And other than loving the town, I'm so grateful. Because there are so many good people here that do so many good things. And I've been exposed to almost all of them. Our unbelievable police department and fire department and first aid guys. They're selfless givers of time and energy, and they put themselves at risk. It's an amazing, an amazing selfless thing to do. And I got to know them personally, which most people in town don't get to do. And I'm so grateful for that. The part I enjoy being on committee wasn't the big things, because anybody can do big things together. It's the small things that really impact lives. And that's the important part of service, is the little things that people don't think of doing. And I tried to do that. And my only wish right now is that what I've done through my timeline committee with all these amazing people is that I somehow made an impact in what I see in Middletown. Because the town, as big as it is, is that small. To the people at the Mac and what they've been through for years, for what is it now, year and a half, I guess, all their ups and downs and trials and tribulations. And then I think what she's been able to do is just amazing. To the seniors in them, and what they do to enrich the lives of seniors in this town is incredible. Everything that's down here is down below. And I'm so appreciative for everything that I'm taking with me. I'm usually the one that sits at the back and not in front, so it's, this is like overwhelming to me, but it's pretty blessed. And I don't think my life would have been this way without us now. So to all here, to all up there, thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I only wish good things for you, and I know you're going to do amazing things. I'm going to miss sitting next to you, Mr. Setimbrino. And Brian. Every now and then I would say something when I was new, and I would watch Ryan even poop. But I want everybody to keep up the heat. Take my committee, so he was. It's all, it all turned out fine, didn't it? But, Ryan, we've known each other for a long time. And I know we talked a long time ago about what you should be doing. And I'm very happy to see you up there as well. And Mr. Hybough, after, as I told you, after watching, I still haven't watched the meeting after I left. But when I saw Phil's reaction to the meeting, I need to sort of take a little bit more time to watch it. But I thank you all for everything you said, because from what I understand, I haven't seen it yet. I may watch it when I go home. It was very sweet, and I do appreciate everything you said. Ted, my big teddy bear. I love you. It's been wonderful working with Ted. As big as he is, he's a sweet. So it's been a delight. And, you know, our little times together on Fridays taught me so much in on committee. The one thing I did learn that I told Kelly was, for a long time, you have to just sort of stay quiet. You have to listen. So it all worked out really well. So I stayed quiet, I listened. So I can do whatever I need to do. Right, Brian?
Never got in trouble.
The one thing I did want to do at the very end. You're today. Remember you in there. You know, I couldn't dance for better support when I wasn't home to dinner. But when I had, it wasn't good for things and it was like alone. And I know it feels very bad about me going to Georgia with him, but it's all right.
Congratulations.
No doubt, the comment of the night is definitely going to be the one about Nelson. Miniman Snell, I know that several of the members of the Township Committee up here have their, would like to say a few words. Miniman Setimbrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming into tonight's meeting, I thought about working with Snell about sitting up here on the dais and sitting on the planning board as well. And I tried and tried and tried to get my comments down to one word. That represents what you did for Middletown, here on the Township Committee and the Planning Board. I couldn't do it. I used to. And how I will set this up, is I will refer to a 2006 James Bond movie. It's called Casino Royale. It was the first movie that gave a trade. People remember that movie. Daniel Craig was sitting at the table with the villain of the day. And Daniel Craig made his final bet. On his final bet, what did he say when he bet all his money? He said, I'm all in. When Pat Snell joined this committee, she was all in. And we really appreciate that. And that's, that makes the best member of this Township Committee. And the ability to dedicate yourself to this township is just fantastic. Those are the best words that I can describe with that, so thank you so much. We appreciate all your time.
Miniman Clark.
Well, I've known Pat, Bill, and his family for 29 years. Right? It's hard to believe it's been that long. But, you know, I got to meet you guys when I was a young man in high school and swimming and all the other things that we did where our families intermingled. And as we all grew and found our place in the world, you know, you and I circle back maybe five, five or six years ago, when I was a fire chief. And Pat whispered in my ear, she goes, one day, you're going to run with me, and we're going to be on the Township Committee together. And I was like, I hadn't really thought about that, you know? It was, it wasn't something that was on the forefront of my mind and, but it was, it always sat in the back once you planted the seed. And then when the time came, I got the phone call and it was, hey, remember, remember that thing we talked about? It's go time. So, you know, it's just, it's, it's awesome that I've known you as long as I have, and I got to watch all the awesome things that you did. And that you were, you were there to, for advice and guidance for myself. For that, I thank you so much. I couldn't narrow it down to two words, Kevin, good job. But I just, thank you. Thank you for everything. And, you know, you always got a, you always got a home here no matter what, so thanks.
Miniman Kratz.
So, very bittersweet, and I've said this in previous meetings, because Pat and I were fortunate to know each other previous. Pat, as a member of the Township Committee, had such a strong supporter of our alliance program and our municipal alliance in town, but our Project Plus program for our young people, for our fifth graders. And there wasn't a graduation that Pat wasn't there for. And was so supportive of all of the students and was genuinely very excited to be there. So again, this, this is always very bittersweet. And I thank you so much for your friendship and your kindness and your wisdom. And I wish you nothing but all of the very best. It's an honor to sit in this seat.
Deputy Mayor.
I just went down there for that beautiful picture up there, which I'll, I'll definitely remember for a long time. But Bill grabbed my arm and said, don't you say a word. So, Pat, you know how I feel about you. You did, you did an amazing job. You completed us. And I just want to thank you and your family, our little friends there as well. I know my kids are going to miss them next year walking around, but I just arranged a couple walking days with them, so. Yes, no, we're taking them. I'll never forget that day back in, by Nicholas back there. And that was, there was a great feeling. And myself, you and Tony, I'll never forget that. After he, we walked a couple mile parade, and of course, we had to walk many more with him after. But who was keeping track of that? But thank you, Pat, for everything. Thank you, Bill, for sharing her. And thank you, everyone else.
Committeewoman Snell, it was an absolute honor to sit up here with you, and I wish you nothing but the best. Love you guys, love the entire family. And I'm so happy that we were finally able to celebrate your tenure to the Middletown Township Committee and most importantly, to the residents of this town. Thanks for your service. God bless all of you. God bless your family. And I just want to say thank you. So, Committeewoman Snell, the good thing for you is now, if you want, you can leave. But, Pat, congratulations.
Next presentation on tonight's agenda, we have the Middletown World Trade Center Memorial Gardens donation presented by Jumping Brook Country Club. I'd like to invite Kevin Maud, Chairman of the Executive Board of Jumping Brook, to please come forward.
Well, I'm making, because I'm not sure I've officially accepted Pat's relegation. So I got an email from Committeewoman Clark the other day saying that some, you know, the Jumping Brook Country Club wanted to make a contribution to the World Trade Center Memorial Garden and honor the 37 Middletown residents that lost their lives. And Pat had an actual fountain that Pat and Ryan worked very hard on, and so many others that worked so endlessly hard on this 20th annual season. This kind of works day and night. I don't know how it does. And then, and then, and then old smoke of the air every single day. So, yeah. I don't tell you what, talking about this. But, but I want to thank you very much for reaching out, Juan, for your generosity, the generosity of your country club. And please, I'd love for you to tell us how this happened and all of the clothes that was. Now, thank you so much. And again, I'm, I'm the head of Jumping Brook Country Club. We do a couple charity events here, one local, and I see one of our members living here in Middletown. You know, we wanted to keep, talk about. But it's great. I eventually worked a piano for a few years. So it's near and dear to my heart, too. So, lay it down there, and I'll check for $2,112. Give it to Berkeley John, I guess. Don't give it to Ted.
I got the checks.
All right.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of minutes for September 20th, 2021, the regular and executive sessions.
Welcome to.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to be finished. This time, we have a public hearing on proposed ordinance 2021-3322, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $1,500,000 for various improvements to the municipal complex by and for the township of Middletown and the county of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $300,000 in bonds or notes of the township for financial part of the appropriation.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3322. I'll start here at Town Hall if anybody has any comments. Public ordinance number 2021-3322. Okay, seeing no member of the public stepping forward, anyone joining us via web access that would like to speak on public ordinance 2021-3322.
Would you like to make a comment?
Sure. My name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive. And I'm looking at the ordinance, I just noticed, I thought we were only going to bond 300,000. That's just initially, correct?
Issuance of 300,000.
That's a down payment.
So we're putting that up front.
There's always a down payment for a bond ordinance.
I see. So we can borrow up to 15, 1.5 million.
Right.
Okay. I was just curious. I thought we were just going to borrow 300,000.
No, I know it looks weird the way it's worded, but. It's always.
Brian's earning this money over there.
Yeah. It's always a 20%.
Uh huh. Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thanks, Tom. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment on public ordinance 2021-3322?
Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, hi, it's Tara Fleming, 49, Randy Weinway, Middletown. I just want to say, not really a comment, just wanted to let you guys know. I walk by the building, you know, the new municipal complex building on a daily basis in the morning when I walk. It's coming along very nicely. It looks very good. That's all. They're very good jobs so far. It looks great, and it's going really quick.
Thanks, Tara. Thank you. It is coming along very nicely, and that red brick does look beautiful on the side of that building. So thanks for the comment. Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include resolutions 21-234 through 21-237, including bingo and rap applications.
Motion to approve a consent agenda.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt a consent agenda. This time, we have Township Committee comments.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Citywoman Kratz.
Just quickly, just welcome home. Again, it will always be your home, and I'm glad that you're visiting, get to visit with your family. And just a quick, just acknowledgement of our police department. We had our second week at Project Plus again as our, our class with our fifth graders in district. And just acknowledging Detective Cruz and Detective Sullivan, who are officers who undercover our kids during the week. So much appreciated for their time and efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Committeewoman Kratz. Committeewoman Clark.
Again, thanks, Pat. Really, really appreciate everything, Bill. You guys.
You guys are awesome. Jumping Brook, that was a unexpected find that they reached out to us. And it just gives us an opportunity to remind the entire community that if you have an idea, to, to help support our, our memorial fund, you can, you can contact us, we'll help you. Or if you want to just run it and you need help advertising it, we'll help you. We are continuously and we will continue to raise money for this, uh, program. We want to install that fountain for next year and, uh, and have the grounds completely done. So, uh, I'll be working with, uh, Committeewoman Snell to, uh, get this finished up for next year. And, um, so you'll be hearing a lot more about it in the very, very near future. And just that we're going to continue our efforts. We're going to sell more bricks and, and continue that walkway. We're going to do more banners. We're going to, any, any creative way we can to try to raise money, we're going to, we're going to figure that out. So if you have ideas, please don't hesitate to share, reach out to us. We're always open to it. That's it. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, just a couple of things. I just got an opportunity to try out the countryside park this weekend with the kids. Really pretty, uh, pretty neat, uh, I guess, kind of gymnasium type thing, uh, there. There's a lot of climbing. I know there's some, some questions with some concerns from, uh, from some residents about maybe some parking, uh, issues over there. You could, you could fit safely eight cars over there, but we're going to look into, uh, maybe a crosswalk from the neighborhood to come across Cherry Tree there. So there's a county road, so it's going to be a little complicated, but, uh, I think Ted's going to look at that. But it's, uh, it's a great place and it's, 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 uh, the, the other side of the, uh, the street is actually a better enjoy that park now. Being up front there and we should be, uh, hopefully we're going to be a lot safer where it is instead of in the back where it was. But there, there's four new parks online. You got, um, you know, Bob and Chansville and Schultz. So I just encourage everyone to, uh, get out and, you know, check them out. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to give, uh, a few things. Kudos to Stephanie and Mark Cartier of No Limits Cafe. If you haven't been, please go. It's the restaurant on Route thirty five, which hires, um, individuals with special needs. And the unemployment rate of those with special needs is at eighty percent. And this facility provides them, Joe Minnulees is here, President of Education, who's, I think, there every single day. As Stephanie Cartier said to me the other day, I'm not sure when she sleeps. But it's a, it's a fantastic, um, restaurant. One that you can easily go to lunch and support and support those with special needs that are, are finding, uh, employment at a place right here in Middletown. So they had a, an unbelievable five K on Saturday, um, where over two hundred runners participated. The picture of Stephanie and I crossing the finish line was fake, obviously, because I was in jeans, but she wanted to do it, so we did it. But I, I enjoyed it very much and really appreciate everything that they do. Which brings me to the next five K that we're having, which is this Saturday. That's the mayor's challenge is taking part. I think we already have over a hundred and fifty runners, uh, partaking. And this year, the charity that is benefiting is Infinite Love for Kids, uh, with cancer, helping kids with pediatric cancer, uh, and the mission of helping, uh, not just the kids, but their families as well. So, uh, please sign up. It's thirty dollars, um, to partake. You don't have to run the five K, you can walk it, you can, you can jog it, you can try and make through it like I did, but, um, uh, and I will, uh, but please, uh, participate if you can. Just a, just a quick note. Obviously, all of us this morning were saddened to hear the passing of Secretary Colton Powell, who passed away, uh, this morning. A, a true statesman, a soldier that when his nation called, he responded. And somebody who embodied the American dream. First African American to serve as Secretary of State. An individual of the utmost respect, um, that I have and that I know that, uh, the residents of this nation have for an individual of that caliber. So I pray for his family and I pray for, uh, all those that were impacted by, uh, General Powell's, um, passing. Um, and finally, this is our last meeting prior to Election Day. And I would encourage every single resident, um, to please, or take in the process. Not because I'm on the ballot, not because of any reason other than it is your duty as an American citizen to partake in the role in forming a government that you, that, that fits your vision for your town, your county, your state and your country. So this year, obviously, is, is a little bit different than it was last year. You have early voting that is starting that you can do right here at Croydon Hall, beginning on October twenty third, which I believe is a Saturday. And those hours start Monday through Saturday from ten AM to eight PM. And then Sunday, ten AM to six PM. The polling place at Croydon Hall will close on the first and reopen as per usual on Election Day, November second.
It's in the senior center.
I'm sorry, in the senior center. Thank you. But please partake in the process and elect people that are going to shape not only Middletown, but those, uh, at the county, the state and the federal government in the vision that you want for your children and your grandchildren. With that being said, I'll open it up for a public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. And if you can begin to wrap up your comments, I'll start with anyone here at Town Hall and then I'll move over to the webex. With that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yeah, man.
You will be missed. I will.
All right, Ben, I'm not going to count the time for the hug, but everything else.
I'd like to know a couple of things. I'd like to know where we stand with the beacon. Where do we stand with that? I can tell you. The beach and everything are over, overland. Get it cleaned up. It gets, it's.
Yeah.
Dancing private.
Yep.
Completely overgrown. I think it's often Tommy. But they don't do, there's no curve on my own hand. There is. It's all grass. They don't edge it. They don't do anything on multiple part of my land. I don't know what you want to do with the baseball field. Baseball field is all overgrown with grass. But please use it. I think.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah.
I'm just saying, because basically.
Money is normally the first one. Money is normally the first hurdle you gotta get past. It's all right.
I mean. No one uses it, no, I can use it to be forty seven years that I've been there. What's, and it's now just, it's completely all over grass. So I was wondering what's wanting to do. That's, that's the big thing. I think Tony did tell me one time, you look and try to get some sand because. Pretty soon it's going to go.
Yeah, so, so, uh, a couple of things on the beacon. We did, um, we have not stopped looking at solidifying the beacon and, as well as repainting the beacon, right? And the way we were looking at it was in a two-phase process, looking at the beacon itself and making sure that that was structurally sound. We're working with T and M. We have been working with T and M since July of two thousand twenty, I want to say, uh, on, uh, obviously there's some structural issues with it that we have to address. And we're working to see if we can cover those costs with some other monies, um, aside from township dollars. But we are working to solidify the beacon up to make sure that it is, it is safe, structurally sound, and to repaint it and, and protect it and make it, make it what it should be. And, and that is a, you know, a spectacular beacon, um, for, for Leonardo. So we, we are still in the process of looking at it from the historical perspective. But looking at it in terms of taking some rivets out, replacing those rivets, uh, looking at the main beam inside and ensuring that that is okay, solidifying that. Um, and then, uh, figuring out the, the best way to paint it. Um, and, and by whatever means that means of getting it, uh, encapsulated and getting it painted. So obviously cleanup needs to happen on the beach itself. You know, I was out there with Ted, uh, Rick was out there, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry. We were out there with T and M, looking at the beacon, um, and seeing what the next course is, you know, what the next steps are in terms of fixing it. Because it is a priority for me. We, we, we put the money aside in our budget, uh, a few years back. Well, maybe it was only last year. But, um, but we did do that to ensure the survival of the beacon, because it is important to me. And I know it's important to the members of the Township Committee that we do something to save it. Next one, Dempsey Property. We are working with, uh, a tree, uh, company right now that we, we do have a budget line for tree trimming and things of that nature to work on that. The, the question, you know, the, the future look at the Dempsey property is all about bringing utilities potentially to it. If we wanted to do that for, for some type of use, right? Because used properties are maintained properties. And, uh, those are protected properties and you have a lot of overgrowth. There's some, there's some other issues that we need to work out with some of the neighbors as well, because the, the property line has, has, you know, grown a little bit in some of those areas. So there, there's some things that we had to fix out, but, you know, but it's, it's definitely on our radar. In the immediate, it's all about cleaning out some of that brush that's in there and, and clearing away some of the trees that could potentially damage or trim the trees that could potentially damage the house itself. If you go in, it's spectacular on the inside. It's actually really amazing to see the inside. But, uh, but we, we, we have some, you know, things that we need to do, um, from a permitting process and from a, um, you know, a, a general, um, you know, tree removal of the process as well.
One, one other thing on it, um, we did just get a grant to, uh, have the building studied to be designated as a historic structure. Because although everyone all understands it's old and we know its history, it's never been officially designated as historic. So we have to do, you have to do a, a, a report and submit that to the state. And that, hopefully when that happens, that'll give us access to more money, uh, that was become available to us to actually fix it up. So that's the next step we're going to be doing is doing a, um, historic, um, determination on the building. That'll probably take about six months.
Yep.
That's it.
You got it, Ben, you're the man. Always good to see you, my friend. Any other member of the public here at Town Hall that would like to make a public comment? Seeing, oh, yes, sir, yes. Come on up. Just state your name and address for the record.
This is Katie Saraceno, I'm on thirty eight, First Baltimore. Just wondering, what's the town's plan for regarding all of the residential buildings that are being built? What's the town's plan for handling the increase in population and services that are needed? Or, as well as expanding the schools?
Well, the, the, first of all, the school question, uh, would be one that you need to direct to the Board of Education. In the last decade, the US Census, obviously, as you know, conducts a census of all the town's population. In, in the last decade, there have been an additional five hundred and ninety six new residents of Middletown. Comparatively to other municipalities, that's a very, very, very low number. We expected it to raise by about a thousand. We were off by that. So when you say an, a, a increase in the population, are you referring to the five hundred individuals that moved into town?
Well, yeah.
Well, you always have demographic shifts, right? You know, I'm one of four kids. I, I, you don't, you don't often see one of four anymore, right? Because the, the times change. College becomes more expensive, childcare is more expensive. So that the, the ways in which people live changes over time. But you look at the steps that Middletown has taken and, and frankly, one of the only towns that has stepped up, to fight unfunded mandates that come down from Trenton, um, in, including affordable housing, which Middletown withdrew from that process because, uh, New Jersey Fair Share couldn't point to Middletown on the map, let alone understand where housing should go, where, where it would is most needed. And that's why Middletown is going to pick up the slack and do what the legislature doesn't have the courage to do in finding ways to supply affordable housing to the people that need it most. Uh, I'm sure you saw, uh, on the, um, in the press, it was covered by pretty much everybody. Middletown's efforts to build affordable housing on a vacant lot that has long played camp, played Campbell's Junction, um, at the old tool rental facility where we're going to provide twelve units, affordable units to the men and women who have honorably served our country. So Middletown is not turning its back on the needs of affordable housing. It's simply, uh, dictating the rules that it needs to dictate because the state's unwilling to do so. So, but the exploding population is not reality, because in a decade, we've, we haven't increased our population by six hundred people.
I could just add to that. No, and that's, that's pretty much the same, the truth for the last thirty years. Middletown's population has barely moved an inch in the last thirty years. And in fact, our school population is the lowest it's been in over forty years. So, so our school district actually closed the school last year. So the school, the school district in terms of district wide population is very, very low. And there's no pressure to build new schools anywhere.
And, and to just follow up on, on Mr. Mercantante's point, I can't, I can never remember if he would, you went, you went to this high school, right? Were you the last class?
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Mercantante was the last class of Middletown High School. What year was it?
Seventy six.
Seventy six, nineteen seventy six, where you had an exploding population. At one point, Middletown student population was fourteen thousand. It's below nine at this point. So you can see the demographic change of that between nineteen seventy six, when they, nineteen seventy seven, I guess, when they opened up the second high school and it became North and South. But you're now down well below that mark that you ever had. You're welcome. Thanks for your comment.
So the intersection of Cherry Tree and Thirty Six. Looking to put a, an arrow in, because I always see, you know, pointed to accident, sir.
Be thirty five.
Yeah, thirty five.
Yeah, yeah. You, you're talking about where the, where target is. Yeah, so this is something that we've brought up, uh, at least four times to the, uh, to the New Jersey Department of Transportation, because that intersection had a public hearing, went through the whole, you know, the whole, uh, legal process that was required. Because that is a state highway, it has to go through the State Department of Transportation. Middletown has voiced the, the needs, uh, and the concerns of some of our residents, but the department, since it still hasn't returned to work yet, um, it's difficult to, to get things done when, uh, the state is still not, uh, the employees are still not going to into the offices.
Okay. And, um, what do you think of East Road?
Committeewoman Kratz?
Committeewoman Kratz lives on East Road. It's a tempting.
It, it, it's, it's one that, that is, that is definitely on our list. And, you know, we did go out for, um, what's on?
We just, we just, uh, applied for the state DOT grant for East Road.
Similar to that, of what we did on Holland.
Yeah, similar to what's coming on Holland.
So, so it's definitely on our radar. You got it. Thank you.
We applied not because Committeewoman Kratz was on East Road.
Long before, it's my zone. Just for clarification. Okay, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment here at Town Hall? Okay, seeing no member of the public, thank you both, uh, your two young people for coming in. I applaud. I applaud you for coming in and asking the questions and being part of, part of your government. I do appreciate that. All right, uh, anybody joining us via WebEx? Go ahead.
Would you like to make a comment?
Hi, yeah, Georgia Media, um, with the state DOT grant for East Road, is there a timetable for that?
Tom, do you know the timetable or Ted?
They usually take about a year, uh, a year till we, till we get awarded it and then we have to do the design, so year, year and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tara.
Uh, please, just let, let us know.
Go ahead, Tara. Sorry, I, I said your name before.
You know, it's a nice way to meet a lot of people in Pennsylvania. Um, there's a nice team there, you know, so it'd be fun.
I think she's. I'm before.
Got it, got it, okay. All right, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment?
I don't have anybody. Oh, yes, one more. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, hi, I'm Dean Croniek, a nine twenty bomber. My question was also regarding the, uh, traffic light that he spoke about. My speaker actually cut out. So I didn't get all of what you said, just pertaining to the timetable of like how that would go about, does which not up?
Well, the, the, as I mentioned about, um, a, about Cherry Tree and, uh, and thirty five at the Target. Uh, or rather, at the, at the, uh, the diner and the Starbucks strip right there. Um, that is a DOT, that it's, it's subject to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Middletown has expressed the concerns that some of the residents have over that intersection. Um, but as stated, it is a DOT highway and they have the jurisdiction of adding, uh, the, the left turn, uh, arrow that has been requested. So.
Very much.
We support, we support that. Um, it's just a matter of getting them to, to, uh, look, take a look at that.
Uh, thank you.
You got it. Okay, uh, seeing no members of the public, uh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just told and it's unfortunate. Um, uh, unfortunately, I wish that the, uh. The, but it appears that the, uh, Link Cross Village Green Association is canceled, the forum that was supposed to take place on October twenty fifth. Um, so I hope you'll, um, as I mentioned, in terms of voting, uh, take a look at, uh, the, the candidates voting this year and, um. Decide on, uh, who fits that vision for Middletown that you sell, but it's unfortunate that, um, that, that was canceled due to a lack of participation. Uh, okay, sorry, just wanted to add that note. Um, okay, uh, seeing no other members of the public stepping forward, move, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committee man Clark.
Yes.
Committee woman Kratz.
Yes.
Committee man Sedimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.